To order, this is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of the board is final. In respect, it does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, pull the board, please.
Ms. Safford? Mr. Lassio?
Here.
Mr. McShane?
Here.
Mr. Noctree?
Here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Ms. Rohr? Mr. Hennessy?
Here. Okay, so just a quick announcement. We are expecting Ms. Rohr to be here, but in case she is not, for all these cases that are being heard today, they will, they stop at zoning board. So with only five members, you would need four votes of approval to be approved. So for some reason, you did not like that odds, the odds there, then it's your right to ask for a tabling. I just want people to be aware of that for these cases coming up today, that they'll need four votes of approval. With that, we will go to citizens to be heard on an agenda item. Anybody could speak on an agenda item at this time. Please be aware, at this board, we do allow you to speak also when the agenda item is heard, but if anybody would like to speak on an agenda item at this time, they can do so. You'd like to speak now?
Do you swear you're in, ma'am? Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Can I have your name and address?
Mary Beth Gannon Keegan, 903 Western Avenue, Joliet, Illinois. I am here to speak about petition 2023-01 in support of my neighbors, the Spacious, and I'm not sure how much you're aware of it, but their home originally had a coach house. It was always running water in this place. I lived directly across the street at the Lockren McFarland home, and my coach house also has original kitchen, original bathroom in it. And I believe in his petition, he's looking to have exercise, be able to work out there and have some type of running water without having the inconvenience of having to run back in the house. The original architect of this home, it was built for the Lennon and Donat families, built it with the intention of their coach house having running water in it. When I look at the Joliet City Directory from 1915, I find a Charles Pearson listed as coachman living at this home. And he wouldn't have been using the bathroom in the main house. He would have been living in the coach house. That's why it says coachman. And I also would like to pass for your viewing just an idea of my coach house. It's a bit messy, but you can see I have original fixtures. Can I hand that to the clerk? I'll wrap it up here. You'll notice when you look at the 1915 directory, the address there, it'll be on the left, it's highlighting yellow. It'll say 1,000 Western. It's prior to the city of Joliet renumbering all West Side streets in 1938. So current address is 900, but in 1915, it was 1,000. So I would just say, I am here to support them. Their coach house is already zoned for that. That was the intention when it was built. And that's what our forefathers approved of when that home was built more than 100 years ago. Thank you so much.
Moving on, there's not anybody else that wants to speak at this time. We can move on to old business for public hearing. We have none.
Could we do the approval of the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they didn't.
No, they stopped at roll call.
Okay. And I don't know if you need to make note that Ms. Rohr did come, so.
Call for a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
I second.
We have motion, second to approve the moments. Pull the board.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. McShane, I believe you would have abstained because you were not yet December's meeting?
Yep.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr, did you attend December's?
I did.
You did?
Okay.
And Mr. Hennessy?
Okay, we've covered citizens to be heard on agenda items, old business for public hearing. We have none. Under new business for public hearing, if the board does not mind, I would like to bring attention to petition 2023-07 and 2023-08 for 1620 Plainfield Road. Those petitions are being requested to be tabled to the February 16th zoning board of appeals meeting. So I just requested you table that at this time in case somebody's here for those items.
Motion to table would be in order.
So move.
Second.
We have motion, second to table the petitions. Pull the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay, moving back to the top of the agenda, petition number 2023-01. The applicant owner is Christian and Meredith Spaglia. Location is 900 Western Avenue. Request is a variation. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation to allow recreation rooms, exercise room, and full bathroom. His accessory uses in addition to an existing detached garage. Zoning Board of Appeals makes the final decision on this matter. Under site-specific information, the subject property is approximately 17,000 square feet in size and is zone R2 single-family residential. The circa 1916 brick house on the property is two stories in height. Property includes a one and one-half story two-bay detached garage which faces east onto Prairie Avenue. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, all properties in this vicinity are a zone R2 single-family residential. Most properties have detached garages with alley access or street access. There are several examples of one and a half and two-story garages and garages with additions in the vicinity. Under applicable regulations, section 47-6.3, R2 single-family residential permitted accessory uses. Section 47-19.8, criteria for granting a variation, and you could refer to the attachment. Under discussion, the applicant seeks to build a one and a half story addition to the existing one and a half story detached garage. Existing garage is 24 feet wide and 28 feet deep and 672 square feet in size. New garage addition will also be 24 foot wide and 28 feet deep. The height of the proposed garage addition will be 18.5 feet, which is the same height as the existing garage. Existing garage has a hip roof, and the new addition will have westward facing gable roof. The proposed addition will have cement board siding with brick accents. According to the applicant, the height and orientation of the proposed addition is intended to complement the existing historic garage height while emphasizing that it is a new structure. In addition, the purpose of the dormers, windows, siding, trimming doors in the proposed garage addition are to complement the architectural style of the house. Floor plans and building elevations for the proposed project are included in the staff report packet. The proposed addition will include a workout room, game room, and full bathroom on the main level. New stairway in the existing garage will provide access to a nine and a half foot wide by eight feet, eight and a half inch deep loft area above the new addition, as well as access to an existing storage area above the existing garage. The property owners will continue to park their vehicles in the existing two-bay garage. With their variance request, the property owners intend to place a restricted covenant on their property which would prohibit the detached garage and any garage additions from being used as a dwelling unit in the future. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve these variation, this variation request, the following conditions should be included. One, that the building permit shall not be issued until the property owner submit evidence that the restricted covenant, which states that the detached garage and any garage additions so not be used as a separate dwelling unit, has been recorded. Two, that the property shall not be utilized with two dwelling units. Three, that the use of the property shall not be expanded in the future. And that concludes our staff report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
I swear you're in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Chris Spaglia, 900 Western Avenue. Along with my wife Meredith, who's here today, we are the applicants. We've lived at 900 Western since 2001. We have six kids, love the house, love the neighborhood. I grew up at 715 Western, two blocks to the east. Our first home after we were married was at Prairie and Farragut. So that's three blocks. So I've made it, you know, on a three-block radius my whole life, which I think is pretty good. We built our law office at Black and Midland, so I'm very committed to the area. I'm very invested in the area. I would like to invest more as you see the proposed project. I've talked to Kappa. The Kappa board has no objection to our application. You heard from one of my neighbors. I've talked to my immediate neighbors who live in the houses. I have a couple rental houses across the alley from us and then across from my garage on Prairie. I didn't talk to the tenants, but I've talked to the neighbors who've lived there. I think none of them had an objection. All of us have been there for many years. I think Mary Beth is across the street. They're fairly new, you know, probably five years, but I think it's going to be a good addition to the neighborhood. I agree with the staff report. It provides an accurate summary of the project. The restrictive covenant we proposed addresses a concern, and I understand the concern, about someone living in the garage addition. That's not our intention. I don't want that to happen. I have no problem restricting the property and putting everyone on notice, future owners, that this cannot be used as a separate dwelling unit. So I think that will accomplish and address a concern so no one could ever come to the city and say, I thought this was an approved use, you know, of someone residing there. So we'll record that and put future owners on notice, you know, provided we get a favorable vote today. Our intention is to create more space to utilize an unused portion of our lot because our garage is way at the back corner of the lot. It's a 195-foot-deep lot. This is going to allow us to utilize this area that is, right now, is just unused. It's going to be an attractive addition, as you can tell from what's up here. I think, you know, we spent the money and we did it right. I think we have full architectural plans, and the proposed uses are things that, you know, we're excited about. An exercise room, the full bath. You're never going to have enough bathrooms when you have six kids, three daughters, and a recreation room. So the space is going to be unique. It's going to allow for a great room feel with a loft area. It's not the kind of space you can create in a historic home that's got a dining room, a living room, and a pretty small kind of TV area. So as Jim pointed out, it will not exceed the height of the current garage. And, you know, one thing, one of the pictures showed the perspective from the alley. That's off of Prairie. Another thing this will do is it will screen our backyard from the rental home that sits really close to the alley. That house basically looks down into our backyard, so that'll be nice, too. Unless you drive down the alley, you're not going to really know this is here because it's, you know, in that back portion. So it's going to be in character with, you know, Prairie style, Craftsman style. That's the goal, and I think it's going to complement the house. We're not going to lose any parking. I think that was a good question the city had, so I prepared, I had our architect prepare that exhibit that showed the existing, and we're not losing any of the parking area. I don't have any problems with the conditions that have been proposed, and so I'd ask for your approval. If any of the board members have any questions, I'll attempt to answer those.
Any questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? I swear you're in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
Jeremy Q., 808 Mason Avenue. I'm up here representing Kappa. We have talked to the city. We've looked at your write-ups. We've talked to the owner, and we have absolutely no problems with this. It's in keeping with the neighborhood, so we would support you approving this variation.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law? Name and address.
Tony Elvareto, 816 Western Avenue. I'm Chris Spaglia's next-door neighbor as well, too. Chris Spaglia and his whole entire family has been great for the community. They're a great neighbor. He's always been there for us and for the community as well, so I'm asking for approval. I don't have a problem. They always kept up with the property. It's very neat. They maintain it very properly, and they're just a great addition to this whole Joliet area. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It should be noted that we did get two, you know, email in regard to this in favor of this application as well that were forwarded to you.
My name, do you want to throw it into the record?
I think I just did.
Okay, then it's done. Mr. Spaglia is making me feel old because I can remember when his dad and I used to have lunch down in the cafeteria at the Rialto Building, and he'd be telling me stories about he and his kids going out west on trips and everything. In fact, I sold him the house, the old, the Harry House that he grew up in. I'm totally in favor of this, but I'm a little irritated that he's making me feel my age. I'll call for a vote on the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pull the board.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
So that vote is final. That does not go on the city council, so that variation is approved. Next petition number is 2023-02. The applicant owner is Remy Valdez. Location is 120 Aiken Avenue. The request is for a variation. The applicant, under purpose, the applicant is requesting the following variation to allow the construction of a covered front porch at 120 Aiken Avenue, and that variation is to reduce the required front yard setback from 30 feet to 17.16 feet. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision on this variation request. Under site-specific information, the property in question is 7,920 square feet, contains a one and a half story single-family residence, a detached garage, and a shed. The house was built circa 1885 and has approximately 918 square feet of living area. There's an existing unroofed concrete porch that sits approximately 17 feet from the front property line. Existing front wall of the house is 23.16 feet from the property line. The property is zone R2 single-family residential. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the property is located in the residential neighborhood south of Washington Street and east of Hickory Creek and Spring Creek. Zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is R2 single-family with a single-family residence. To the south is R2 single-family with a single-family residence. To the east is R3 one and two-family residential with a two-unit residence. To the west is R2 single-family with a single-family residence. Under applicable regulations, section 47-6.4, R2 yard and lot requirements, and section 47-19.8, finding of facts supporting a variation, and you could refer to the attachment on that. Under discussion, the petitioner wishes to fully remodel the existing house at 120 Aiken Avenue, which includes adding a covered porch along the front and south side of the house. Existing front wall of the house is 23.16 feet from the front property line, and there is an existing unroofed concrete porch that is approximately 17 feet from the front property line. Required front yard setback in the R2 district is 30 feet. Because of the existing non-conforming setback, the petitioner requires a variation to construct the covered front porch. The proposed porch would be 17.16 feet from the front property line. Proposed elevations and floor plans are attached. Other houses in the neighborhood have covered front porches with similar non-conforming setbacks. Petitioner purchased the property in 2021 to use as a residence and is improving the house in order to make the property more attractive and vibrant. Petitioner also currently is working with Neighborhood Services to resolve minor property maintenance violations, and under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
I swear you're in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
Remy Valdez, 2034 Inglewood Street in Lockport.
Any comments you'd like to make?
I do. I've lived at this property since I was little, 1985, and my mother and father, like, they kept the property up, which it failed, it falls when they passed away, and now I'd like to rebuild it and bring it back to its standard.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by the board? Any questions? Out in the audience, anybody wishing in favor? Anybody opposed? Chair closes petition as support for discussion and a motion.
A move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you.
That vote is also final for approval. Petition number 2023-03, petitioner is Correct Digital Displays Incorporated. Property owner is 1590 North Larkin LLC. Location is 1550 North Larkin Avenue. Request is a variation on signage. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a variation on signage to allow a wall sign that does not face a public way. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision for this variance request. Under site-specific information, the city council approved the St. Francis Outlet Minor Subdivision at the August 17, 2021 meeting, and the subdivision created two commercial lots in the Northridge Plaza Shopping Center. Two-unit retail building is under construction at the .9 acre subject property at 1548 through 1550 North Larkin Avenue. Starbucks intends to open here in the spring of 2023. Vasa Fitness is the anchor tenant of the other lot created by this commercial subdivision. Vehicular access to the subject lot is from existing internal drives that service the entire surrounding retail center development. The lot in question is Zone B3 General Business District. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the subject property is within the Northridge Plaza Shopping Center, which is a multi-tenant retail center, and is surrounded by similar retail uses. All surrounding properties are Zone B3. Applicable regulations, 47-17.21 signs, 47-17.213BB. Criteria for granting a sign variance, and you could refer to the attachment. Under discussion, city regulations do not allow signs that do not face a public way in the B3 zoning district. Correct Digital Displays Incorporated acting on behalf of Starbucks seeks approval to erect a 20-foot, 20-square-foot siren logo sign, sign A, on the north side of the building, which will face Vasa Fitness in order to increase the store's visibility to customers traveling within the retail center and southbound on Larkin Avenue, as well as facilitate safer vehicular circulation in the area. Therefore, variation on signage is required to allow this sign. Should the zoning board of appeals approve this variation request, the tenant space will have 40 square feet of wall sign area, which is less than the 400 square feet, foot maximum permitted sign area for this entire two-unit retail property. Conceptual building elevations, sign elevations, and altus survey are attached to this staff report. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law, sir?
I do.
Name and address.
Greg Groat, 317 Davis Street, Sandwich, Illinois. It's pretty cut and dried. Starbucks, I asked them if they really wanted to have the sign there. They're like, yes, we do. So I wasn't really going to fight with them. I'm happy to do whatever the board decides to do. I think it's a great company. I think they bring a lot of revenue. I don't see where that sign would really cause any problems for traffic or anything else, but we'll do what the board decides. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions by the board? No comments? Anybody in the audience?
I just had a comment about, it's somewhat unrelated, but I want to commend the city and the staff specifically. The Northridge Plaza, five or six years ago, many of us are familiar. We just lost the grocery store. It's completely abandoned, and the only thing that was in the parking lots ever was seagulls and trash. And now we've created several new places with infill development that was never there, and it's a great thing for the city, for the revenue and everything like that. So those are my comments.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion, second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
That vote of approval is final as well. Petition number 2023-04, the applicant is Red Point Realty Solutions Incorporated. Status of the applicant is contract purchaser-developer. The owner is TFG Joliet LLC. Location is the southwest corner of Drowdon Road and Caton Farm Road. Request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow an early education and daycare facility located at the southwest corner of Drowdon and Caton Farm Road. Per the zoning ordinance, section 47-5.283, daycare centers may be allowed in B1 neighborhood business zoning districts, provided that the use is not less than 40 feet from any lot in a residential zoning district, provided they have 75 square feet of outdoor play area for each child, and that the outdoor play area is enclosed by fence or wall at least three feet in height. Both the daycare center building and outdoor play area will be located over 60 feet from the nearest residentially zoned parcel. Future development of the intended use on the subject property is also subject to approval of an amendment to lot six of the Drowdon Point Center resubdivision, which will be discussed at the meeting later today for planning commission. The amendment would create a separate lot for the proposed use on the planning development The amendment would create a separate lot for the proposed use on the planning development plan. Uh, the ZBA will make the final approval for this special use permit request. Under site-specific information, the subject property is approximately one point seven seven five acres in size, and was most recently planted, is a lot for, for future commercial development with the Droughton Point Center Resubdivision in twenty eighteen. The Droughton Point Center subdivision was zoned to B one neighborhood business zoning district in two thousand and seven, with the intent of creating a neighborhood business center. A physician's immediate care medical office is located to the north, and a CVS pharmacy is located northeast of the subject property. Proposed tenant is Children of America Educational Child Care. Tenant intends to operate between the hours of six-thirty AM and six-thirty PM, with drop-off hours taking place between six-thirty AM and eight-thirty AM, and pickup hours taking place between four-thirty PM and six-thirty PM. Draft elevations of the proposed early education and daycare center have been included in the staff report packet. Elevations show a two-story building with brick veneer siding with, in stone veneer running along the building's base. Precast accents are displayed intermittently with the front facade. The proposed daycare center use would contain ten thousand square foot of building along the west side of the property, to the five thousand two hundred square foot outdoor play area to the south of the main building. Concrete walkway would separate the main building from the outdoor play area. Interior access drives provide connections to both Caton Farm Road, uh, right in and right out, and Droughton Road. The subject property would contain fifty-six parking stalls, which satisfies the city's parking requirement for the proposed use. Parents and guardians will be required to park onsite and go inside the daycare center building to drop off and sign out and pick up students. The developer does not intend to utilize drop-off and pickup lanes of any time. Surrounding zoning, land use in character, to the north is B one commercial, the south is B one vacant outlet, to the east is R two, single-family residential, and the west is R two, uh, which is a stormwater detention spot. Applicable regulations, section forty-seven dash eleven point two-A-A, special uses, neighborhood business districts, section forty-seven dash five point two-eight-three, special uses, daycare centers, section forty-seven dash five point two-C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and you could see the attached petition. Under discussion, approval of the requested special use permit, along with the accompanying amendment to Lot Six of the Droughton Point Center Resubdivision, would allow development of an early education and daycare center facility located at the southwest corner of Droughton Road and Caton Farm Road. State of Illinois Department of Children and Family Services requires daycare center operators to meet an extensive number of conditions before a state-issued daycare center license can be procured. In addition to meeting the city's requirements for obtaining a general business license, a special use permit would be in addition to require that the applicant meet all state code requirements and obtain a State of Illinois daycare center license. Floor plans of the proposed facility have been included in the staff report. The floor plans indicate a maximum enrollment of one hundred and seventy-six students. Floor plans further indicate the number of teachers that will be provided in each classroom per state requirements. In addition, city and state codes require an outdoor play area consisting of seventy-five square feet per child, with the total number of children using the outdoor play area at any time. The petitioner is proposing an outdoor play area of approximately five thousand two hundred square feet, which would limit use of this area to sixty-nine children at any given time. The city's zoning ordinance further requires a minimum three-foot-high fence to be placed around the perimeter of the outdoor play area. Approval of the requested special use permit will be condition, conditional upon staff approval of a landscape plan that meets the requirements of the city's landscape and screening regulations. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, the following conditions would be included. One, that the daycare center business shall be registered with the city's, city clerk's office. Two, that the petitioner provides a valid daycare center license from the State of Illinois prior to issuance of any necessary building permits. Three, that the petitioner provides a staffing plan pursuant to section four oh seven point nine zero of the state's licensing standards for daycare centers, for the proposed daycare center prior to the issuance of any necessary building permits. That the petitioner, uh, four, that the petitioner submits a plan for fencing of the outdoor play area, with design, style, and specifications of fencing shown prior to issuance of the permit. Uh, five, that, uh, pursuant to the regulations in section forty-seven dash fifteen E of the city's zoning ordinance, submission of a landscape plan to be approved by city planning staff and city forester with the future building plans prior to installation. Six, that the onsite parking lot lighting and building signage lighting be turned off when the daycare center use is not in operation, uh, and during the night. Uh, seven, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. Eight, that, uh, the special use, uh, granted shall be, uh, terminated unless a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, um, is not obtained within a hundred and eighty days, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner here? Oh, it's gonna just, oh, my thought, okay, go ahead. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Names and addresses.
Aaron Yeshufer, um, address is one eight four oh one Burbank Boulevard, Tarzana, California, nine one three five six.
Uh, Thomas Carroll, twelve oh seven Cedarwood Drive, Crest Hill, uh, with Geotech Incorporated, we're the engineers and surveyors for the project.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make, gentlemen?
We believe, um, bringing a daycare center, it is a great amenity for the community. It provides a professionally-run, safe environment for the, uh, community to bring their kids to be taken care of while they go to work. Uh, the operator, um, has over ninety locations, and they're expanding throughout the country. They're expected to have over a hundred and fifty locations within the next twelve to eighteen months. It is extremely professionally-run, clean, uh, safe environment for the children. Uh, the design, um, has met all the requirements, uh, of the city, and we will continue to observe all the requirements of the engineering and the planning as we complete the plans for the construction. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes the petition to the floor.
It should be noted again that we did receive one email, uh, response, and it weren't opposed, but just wanted...
Now, we received copies of those, yeah.
Yeah, we received them.
Want those entered into the record, too?
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, try to speak just for a moment? I'd like to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, one of the objections or concerns raised in, in that message was about the traffic on Caton Farm and, and Droughton, and I was, I vaguely recall that I think a traffic survey was done some time ago for some facility on the other side of Caton Farm. I just wonder if this is a concern that the city feels, uh, is from this particular area.
Our, our traffic engineer did not fear that this would present, uh, you know, additional traffic concerns for the area. You know, this is, you know, a relative, um, small generator of traffic, you know, in certain times of the day, and, um, they felt that the existing signals and the number of, uh, areas that can be accessed from Droughton and from Caton Farm Road were adequate.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add also that, you know, this is proposed within a development that was previously constructed, uh, you know, was subdivided. Uh, the improvements were put in, and it was always intended as a commercial development, so, uh, we're, we're just complying with those original development plans.
Thank you. Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the petition. Call the board.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And so the special use, uh, aspect of this proposal is approved, uh, here at zoning board. Next petition, number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, Amrock LLC is the applicant. The owner is Transport Ventures Two LLC. Location is twenty-nine sixty-one Mound Road. Request is a special use permit. The purpose, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow the installation of an electric security fence for U two, UTC of Chicago Navistar located at two, again, two-nine-six-one Mound Road. For the city of Joliet, zoning ordinance, electric fences are allowed in all industrial districts as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the zoning board of, of appeals, in accordance with section forty-seven dash five point two. The site-specific information, the ten-point-one acre subject property is Lot One of the Mound Road Logistics Center subdivision, which was approved in July twenty twenty-one. In, in May twenty twenty-one, city council approved a special use permit to allow truck equipment in sales, service, and repair at this site. Following this approval, a truck sales and service facility was constructed on the property. Navistar currently operates an international use truck center at this location. Property is Zone I T, I two, general industrial district. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is B three, general business, and that's Interstate AD warehousing. To the south is I two, general industrial, and that's undeveloped. Uh, same for the east, uh, and to the west is I two, general industrial, but there's an industrial truck terminal at that location. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven dash fourteen point two-A-K, special uses, uh, industrial district, and section forty-seven dash five point two-C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and you could refer to the attachment. Under discussion, Amrock LLC, on behalf of UTC of Chicago, Navistar requests to install a battery-powered electric security fence around the perimeter of the site for the existing truck sales and service facility. Amrock installs electric fences and other perimeter security solutions across the United States. UTC of Chicago Navistar would like the fence installed to better secure their property and deter theft. A letter explaining the reason for the request is included with the attached application. In twenty eighteen, the city enacted an ordinance to allow electric fences as special uses within industrial district, districts, subject to the criteria outlined in section forty-seven dash fourteen point two-A-K of the zoning ordinance, and the, that a section is attached. The attached site plan and notes illustrate that the criti, criteria of the ordinance will be met. The proposed ten-foot electric fence would be located inside of the existing six-foot perimeter fence. Warning signs in English and Spanish will be located along the fence every thirty feet. Subject property is located within an industrial subdivision and bordered on the north by I eighty with I two, general industrial zoning surrounding other three sides of the property. Therefore, the installation of an electric fence at this location will not be out of character with the surrounding area. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, the following conditions would be included. One, uh, that the special use permit will lapse unless a building permit or a certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than one hundred and eighty days. Two, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of special use permit, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner? Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Chris Heaton with Amrock, five fifty Assembly Street, Columbia, South Carolina. Uh, essentially, we support the staff support, uh, staff report, and, uh, we urge your, your approval of the special use permit in this. We have, uh, representatives from UTC here, and we're happy to answer any questions if you have any about the product, the location, or the need for the product.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Well, we're sliding right through. Nope. Chair closes petition to the floor, and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the board.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And this one, uh, as the staff report stated, will go to city council on February twenty-first, uh, with the recommendation for approval. Petition number twenty twenty-three dash zero six, the applicant is Northern Builders Incorporated. Status of the applicant, uh, they are the agent. Uh, the owner is Cherry Hill LLC. Location is Lot Twenty-four in Cherry Hill Business Park. Request is a variation. Petitioner is requesting a variation on permitted trailer parking to allow double stacking. This, again, is located in the Cherry Hill Business Park. Site-specific information, the subject property is approximately twenty-four acres and is Zone I one light industrial. Upon future development, the site would contain a cold storage warehouse facility. A site plan of the future facility has been included in the staff report packet. Facility would be approximately three hundred thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet in size. Proposed double stacking parking would be located to the west of the main warehouse facility. Each row of truck parking would be separated by a drive aisle. Site would have fifty-eight total trailer stalls in its first phase of development, the potential to add forty-five stalls in the future, should the cold storage facility expand. All trucking operations would be protected by a guardhouse and security fence. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is I one undeveloped farmland, to the east is County A one undeveloped farmland, to the south is County A one undeveloped farmland, and to the west is I one undeveloped farmland. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven dash nineteen point eight, criteria for granting a variation, and you could refer to the attachment, and then also section forty-seven dash seventeen point one-seven, off-street parking regulations. Under discussion, forty-seven dash seventeen point one-seven, of the city's zoning ordinance prohibits double stacking of semi-trailer parking. Because the proposed trailer parking is not a raid, and a single road is considered double stacking. Petitioner has noted that all cold storage facilities are designed with loading docks on one side of the building, which creates a need for double stacking trailers in the loading dock side of the building. City staff has reviewed the proposed site plan and determined that the proposed truck chart, truck trailer parking arrangement will not result in any increased traffic, uh, conflicts or complications with turning movements. Finding of facts needed to support the requested variation is outlined in section forty-seven dash nineteen point eight of the city code, establishes a practical difficulty that warrants the requested variation. Due to the design of the facility, it is impractical, impractical, impractical cult, no, boy, sorry about that, too long of a minute. To require a row of trailer parking on the east side of the building, removed from the proposed loading dock location. This arrangement would also disperse incoming traffic, truck ingress to two separate locations from Spencer Road, as opposed to the proposed site layout, with the requested variation on double stacked parking, which would limit truck ingress to one point to be controlled by a guardhouse off Spencer Road. Uh, there is no conditions that are noted, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner here?
I am, sir.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
My name is Ken Einhaus with Northern Builders, uh, office at fifty-sixty River Road, Schiller Park, Illinois.
And you have to say you do.
I'm sorry, I do. I represent both Northern Builders and our client.
Okay.
Uh, I agree with everything that, uh, Jim says. The particular layout for this facility, uh, allows controlling security from one point of Egress with the, uh, guardhouse. The road that is shown on the east side is, uh, merely for, uh, emergency access. It is gated for fire trucks only, and they would have the only access. It also supports the, uh, the maintenance of the riser rooms and the, uh, and the main sprinkler room. It's a highly specialized, uh, flexible facility that can provide for, uh, cooler operations at thirty-five degrees or freezer operations at minus fifteen degrees. Those are very specialized equipment, uh, going in there that will require, uh, maintenance. In addition, uh, this client believes in, uh, green technology. We have a proposed solar farm on the, uh, west side of the, uh, building to reduce electrical costs, and, um, they're just a great client. Nationwide, national, uh, client that, uh, does these facilities all over the United States. all over the United States. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have any.
Do we have any questions by the board?
Yeah, I just have one that's probably based on idiocy on my part. The staff report talks about double stacking, but that does not mean putting one on top of the other, is that correct?
I think that double stacking means having two on the same side of the building. We revised our plans and separated them, where we have basically the building with the loading docks, the drive aisle, and then a row of trailer parking. We have an additional drive aisle that separates the other row of trailer parking. It also allows full circulation. Drivers always want to back in driver's side, so it allows them to come in, go past the guardhouse, loop around at the end, come back south, and then be able to back in driver's side, which is very functional, and it also allows the guard to monitor all operations of this facility and provides for high security.
And there's no container stacking going on here. These are all on chassis.
Okay, that was.
These are trailers. There's no stacking. It's, they're ordinary, normal. I think the only difference between them is they are refrigerated because they're all refrigerated goods.
So there's no stacking, but you used the word stacking, or they did, or somebody did.
Stacking, I think, means two together, but even though we have two sets of trailers, they're completely separated, drive aisle in between each one, and there'd be an additional fence between the trailers and the proposed solar farm.
Any other questions or comments by the board?
Yeah. The trailers that are going to be parking in these aisles, they're all part of the facility, or they have business in or out. They're not staying there overnight, long-term parking, long.
It's not long-term parking. This is moving product, product, you know, product in and out, in and out.
But all relevant to the actual facility, correct?
It's all relative to the actual facility. I've learned a lot about this in the past eight months. The world of cold storage has changed very, very much, you know, for efficiency and economics. They basically lease by the pallet space for efficiency, so, I don't know, let's assume you got Green Giant, you know, green beans or something like that. Well, they'll come in, they'll go to this facility, and they'll take 10,000 pallet spaces. Well, from here, they can go to the closest Costco, to the Jewel, to some other one, rather than having all these other hubs. It streamlines operations for our food services, which is a critical operation.
Any further questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board, please.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And so that vote is final for approval here. Petition 202307 and 202308 were previously tabled. Moving on through the agenda, under old new business, not for final action or recommendation, we have none. Under eight public comments, anyone wanting to speak on a non-agenda item can speak for four minutes if they like. I see no one here, but if they wanted to speak on non-agenda items, they can at this time. Seeing none, then you can adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Pull the board.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Rakes?
Aye.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.